Uh, it's six o'clock, so we're gonna call me into work. Um. We're gonna. Oh, yeah, I do. It's very, thank you. So you know that that the next day is right now. You see the problem of students, one nation, for all, and it is all really interesting stuff. Alright, so my board meeting everyone. Yes, most of us will also be quite busy now. Um. And so. If you guys have shared those minutes from our last meeting. Uh. Any questions or comments on the last meeting over in the session again? Is there anything to approve? So, the second, sure, I won't pay back.
Alright.
And I wasn't here, sorry. And then, um, the second session, then we have any questions or comments? There are questions to approve the second session events from last meeting. So, the second, sure, I won't pay back. Alright, I wasn't here. Alright, the third of the boards, and you do the follow up boards, full extent boards. Questioning, answering, watering, sixty thousand nine hundred dollars and cents. So we're all part of the last one, first, twenty four, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Yeah. Well, okay, so, uh, okay. This is something, but we should think about the possibility of. Sorry. So anyway, that's, um, one thing, so. And if you can give me a bit, if I have a question again. And then, please, I'm really prepared for the expert pair on, on birthday, okay, that. Yeah, and it's really awesome, which is the topic that we've already been knowing.
And I have the, yeah, for this week, we have our faculty versus student base coming. One for a great, one for a fifth grade, Friday, April twelve, we, April twelve, we have our H P O N C O connection with the L G P T C. A major thing to open, uh, there will be quietness, sessions, music, and lots of energy in front. We are looking forward to, of people break, going to break night after break, and certainly, in, allow it to be live, with students being, we should have a goal. Students are definitely looking forward to seeing. Yes, and then, quite.
Okay, and so for this year, so we see now, in front of the class, we're celebrating specialism, make a part. Fifteen, suppose, one minute, site each, each day, for a gap of, to charity, country, and we walk to our gallery, the, the, the. We go far to library, with, to, this, this, this. To spend time with this, and, and, they, they say, yeah, they come out from their houses. Thanks to all the specialists, other handful of other P S staff, according to the place, they flow back. And today, all the P S students in the fun park, so they have various, the festival fundraiser that is near term to do to the playground and properties. Finally, excited, we, to be doing that, the, the song, day, which always is free and show. To begin the application, which, which history is someone. With invited online faculty students, see to our beach, go today, and. Come, come, day by one, with business.
And then, at the middle school, we're looking forward to our baseball ensemble teams home game, we began today. Students have also enjoyed being able to eat outside of the brand new picnic tables that were bought by, by, and. And N S tariff, or initiatives, the tables, the fundraiser, also will give, will give all the middle school students the best day ever event, which is. It is a giant field day with music, come to ice, and seven giant crabs on the right arm. Finally, the spring highlights, you do, tips to six black, you understand, and everyone is also looking forward to the N S drama prediction.
And last week, we still have, has had a good, and then, so it's half full weeks, and coming back to break. My first pajama on, three spell of performances, the past week is still last weekend. Have been around since the past two weeks as the buzz began to go around on my brain. Eleven, twelve, three students will attend the annual opportunity fair on Friday as well. There'll be over three local, the set organization, which reminds me of my D S, about geography. But we have three different families, five men, and will be until Sunday, April. When we get back from break, students will be physically prepared for A K C M, not to be fun, but great time to students to take a whole different. And, 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 and. Thank you, guys. Julie, I think. That just, with me, um, both, yeah, great, yeah, Gabrielle and Angela Mill were, um, in the play. Um, my students are supposed to be happy, like, I spoke, and they've spoken, and, 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 um, Gabrielle was, Gabrielle was asked. Those people are not from a, area of questions, well, it's, he's starting, um, and Angela Mill, who was, and, 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 against, so, um, great job, and, and. Thank you to the advisors, and I, I, yeah. Thank you, guys. Alright, so then, she is a donor who would accept cash donations. Okay, so, um, we currently have a donation of four hundred and twenty-five dollars from Rod's transition service. Um, this donation is targeted to support the more in the physical E L A and other students, um, going to the training, or, or, or others. Um, there's a helping with our transportation. That's great. Anybody got anything on that?
Sure.
Alright, so we have a motion to approve the cap donation from, 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 from. So, second, sure, I won't pay back. Thank you so much for the donations, appreciate it. Alright, superintendent entry point, five minutes. Okay.
Um, so I shared with me a, um, comprehensive entry plan that is. One of the final steps toward this initial year, um, that began my super pregnancy. Um, during the fall, I came to the community and shared with them a plan for listening and learning, uh, data collection, and then. What we have, in, in, whose mind is the analysis and reflection. Um, and it's just, uh, three key areas during this entry plan. Uh, first was our students' experience, you guys can be that. Uh, first is our students' experience, how we provide all students with quality education that fosters personal development and intellectual growth.
The purpose of PPS has developed a specific protocol that principals, teachers, and parents are putting into place in classrooms. But we need to make sure that we have a level clarity of what that looks like and make sure that those things are consistent. And finally, our tech department, um, we have an extremely successful one to one program. We are in the morning part. Um, all of our teachers are professional with our students. Um, everyone has lives. Um, we were actually really ahead of the game, which was wonderful when school leaders took place. Um, the department itself is very well appointed. They have a constant presence in our schools and classrooms. Um, our technicians are prepared to respond, making sure that our teachers have exactly what they need for the daily lessons. And if something is, you know, all of a sudden not working, uh, there may be a delay of time to figure out and see how we can make it better. Um, we were able to supply all of our frequently used classrooms with those digital media boards. Um, and then, and the department has also led our transition this year to a new student information system. Um, so for those of you who are familiar with Power School, um, as part of the question, we feel about the process. We are moving to Power School. So that had been worked on. All of that is an extremely conversant process. Um, but they are leading the charge. They are the VP for staff in the next, um. A few areas would grow there is that the teacher administrator laptops are actually getting to, uh, are approaching end of life, um, on them. So we will be looking to purchase new laptops at some point, um, just in order to give them a level of activity. And another component that families talked about was they were concerned that their children were being spent too much on screens in terms of, of lessons and online activities. So, um, we really need to take a look, um, to ensure that there's a balance of appropriated apps or lessons that are using technology or that are either from books. And then also students, you know, writing, reading actual books and all of those different things that we also run for our students. Um, so I just wanted to share with all of you strengths and opportunities, um, for the mission at the goal. Overall strengths is everyone I spoke to talks about the overall point of community and heritage between students, families, and educators. Um, there's a lot of dedicated staff and a lot of longevity that truly care about our students. The commitment to the whole child, seeing students have more than just a test score, test score. Um, and professional development that really aligns with our mission, initiative, and educators. Um, challenges, these are nothing surprising. I'm sure anyone at this table or in the audience. The ongoing budget deficits within our community that require staffing and program changes. Um, inconsistent practices, practices around communication, um, by most of families. The performance gap within student sectors. The need for more training and resources to support diverse cultures, perspectives, and backgrounds. Inconsistent beliefs around student learning and the rigorous expectations for all students. Um, so those are some strengths and challenges there. So our big steps are really to engage the community and taking a look at our current strategic plan. Uh, we have vision 2026 that is kind of at its midpoint at this time. Um, but with the new information that we have, um, it's really important for us to sit down and to Google at that vision and say, does this meet the needs of our, of our district department, maybe based on what we know, the new information that we have? Um, and where can we maybe change this? Um, I think one of the biggest challenges for us right now is making sure that in that entire community, um, we're keeping lives and communication open, assuming positive intentions, and taking the time to listen and learn from each other. Um, at the end of the day, we all have similar goals that we want our students to succeed. Um, we all want to let us back to them. We want them to feel safe and accepted, feel a sense of pride and accomplishment. Um, and absolutely have opportunity to success, access, and making the work. So we will be continuing to take a look and identify, um, where we want to start, like some of these, some of these opportunities for growth. Have you got any questions or talk more specifically about what we need to do in the end itself?
I mean, it's been, you know, scanning, actually seeing it written down in our, you know, the data around surveys involved. Like just to really view, view, kind of what you saw, uh, to thank you that, uh, oh. What's this? Kind of what have you been talking about lately? I think it's not a lot. I was almost surprised. Exactly. Um, it is not like this is like, it's from a, from a survey response or something like that. If you did, reasons it's about, still, I'm like, a little more in aspect. If you did reason it's about a lot, are you part of it or is it just more of a question?
Uh, so we have, there's some really great comments in the surveys as well. So, um, you all have the paper version of this document. It will get posted on our website by the end of the year. They're all active, written from all of the surveys in here. So, um, there were a few comments about, um, the need for staff training around, um, racial equity. Or, um, conversations about, um, a specific experience that they may have had, whether it was in classroom or with an administrator that was difficult for them, which was a lot of us. Um, so I will, once it goes up, everything is impacted, like it's exact and how people shared it. Um, if there were specific names, um, I took those names out, um, for people that think, you know, check for, um, keeping people's privacy there as well. But, um, it's all there and available for everyone to see as well.
Yeah, I think communication too, like I can see why people would answer certain, like if somebody know, but like, just sitting here, both as a parent and as a school community member, involve communication assured. Digital, but from across the, from like a meeting series and all organized, you know, step by step, I mean, by high end. Like I think that's a, you know, a definitely huge step in the right direction. From, from Christine and all the way up to Jen as well, you know, I think from our standing, you know, in debt, kind of make a small mark on there. Of just like how much better and clearer, I feel like we can understand both sides, you know? Uh, and that, and there are all those challenges, so it's maybe even harder in a certain degree. And thankfully, we've kind of been prepared, uh, you know, I, I feel like this is more than we've been since I've been on. Uh, you know, and these, makes these meetings in this future meeting, I feel like we're kind of all aligned, like this is what's going on. Here you go, you know, um, push them, it's all my budget, every, every line I mess it out, that's pretty much. You know, if you, if you want to find it, you can find, pretty simple to find.
I think the one thing to remember too is, you know, one of the positions we lost was that communications position. You know, that was responsible for a law we put out to, you know, the town as a whole. So I mean, that's a big goal that you have to kind of make up. It's not, that's not a big deal responsibility. Stick with somebody else. So that's been, you know, I mean, we get, you know, the, you know, the individuals from, to depend. And, and one thing I always struggle with is I only have one student, so I don't know what's going on. But, you know, four of five schools, because I only have one student in high school, so like I didn't know what they all meant, you know? So I mean, just several small things like that, like, I know it was one year, we, we had a meeting. And it was a parentage conferences or something, like why are we meeting? This, essentially all of us parents were, uh, that conference or something. I think something like that is just, we don't get a lot of, you know, district-wide communication, not that I want you to, it's a very, you know, like, our events that seems to be lost.
So maybe we did too much, um, like, don't believe us on my own, just, you know, just on stage, you know, it's fair to, so, yeah. I mean, I think just, I mean, I can be a little different, you know, high school, probably maybe talk to your kids and maybe tell you how it's going on. You've got a, a secondary, you know, my, yeah, my son, okay. Yeah, so, um, I'll, 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 I'll try to find it sometimes, I think, uh. So kind of start here, uh, I feel like we've been given maybe just an opportunity here to delve into what we need to do, uh, rather than kind of pass it in the back, we did very well. We, we talked about student experience. We had a great bunch of great things about, but we didn't really get into, okay, what we just like. And this will be a great example, I should super, I should, it just left, so, unfortunately it hasn't. But there's, there's no way that, that student experience is all possible, right? So why aren't we, why aren't we just stay the best? We need to look at the negatives and say, yeah, this is a follow-up, you know, whatever. And we have to get that next step. Uh, so, you know, the, the idea of focus so much on the class, I think is a little, um, disheartening to me. Uh, and then when we did focus on the negative, it sounded like we kind of, uh, kind of pigeonhole ourselves to like, what we discuss as, as subgroups. And I'm not sure why we're in that, but obviously, uh, some of the stuff in here, like, you know, there was, one of the comments where someone, was that, uh, three, three percent of the candidates responded, I agree, that school battles are diverse in the child's backgrounds. And, and I, I read that, and I'm not sure what he means, because the numbers were stated, we're kind of on a change district. Right? We're, and we all, if that's, that's the reality, we're, this is not a, you know, city district, the reality. People, we all lost a lot, quite frankly. So I, I'm confused by what that kind of means. I'm confused by a lot of our way, probably only about, you know, there are suburbs we only address the gap in a suburb state. Quite frankly, you know, I made comments to, I think that's, you know, with the gap in a suburbs. Honestly, that is heavily in light of the gap nationwide. I, I, I doubt that situation, that you need to go, right, situation. So at some point, I say, okay, well, what's the opportunity cost of focusing all our attention? You know, by that, we're spending so much time looking at one thing, if we're talking about the larger, the larger activities. You know, and, and I was saying like this, because we are not just forget it, but I was saying about, you know, if you, if you have a day now and there's a bunch of those, you know, you should turn heads to, to, to stop some walls, what walls do we stop on? Stop on the front two, this is job to watch and talk to. So at, at some point, we got to start thinking about, like, are, are we, are we letting all the kids kind of prove it, prove it down? Or we, or we're doing all kind of data, or are we, are we trying to say that the wider scope of this, trying to interpret the wider scope of this? And I know it's, you know, it's going to sound callous to some people, but the, the reality is we are in a kind of situation where we need to start thinking up too.
Until, until, you know, you're doing that, like, to the, right, till like the high tide, high tide research. So what was specifically, one of the things that we keep talking about and that I can highlight in touch is the tier one instruction. So, um, high quality, high material, research-based. We will need to make sure that tier one is really, really strong, because if we don't, we're going to continue to see kids slide under the cracks. Um, or in the meeting dimension, if we mean on that, and then also what impact such patient members are going to score up. So it's, um, we, we have to focus on.
So the, the high tide analysis is, is throughout the time, that's, that's the problem. And I, and if we focus on this, certainly then we all seem better as well. I, I'm not so sure that I agree with you, and, and you know, we have so many times, education is not a way. So I, I trust and value your opinion, your opinion, the district's impartial. However, I also want to make sure that we're not forgetting that there is, we, we talk about every student and make sure. Um, meaning is every student, I feel like we're starting to get away from that, I feel like we're starting to get away from meaning is every student. And we're, we're, we're still working on the suburbs and, and what's going on there, and for that, my theory is, you know, a whole lot of the kids that are, are, we're losing education, they're losing, you know, attention. I don't know, I mean, this, but yeah, it's, it's not like I'm, I'm any stress to the imagination, I tried to sit here and tell you, I was like, God. I'm just going to, I, I feel like we started to focus so much on that, that we're losing, losing sight of some of this. Yeah, I think I would think there is like, this was incredible, like there's priorities. So like, we're not, no, we need to focus, no, we have issues. And like, I think now, what I assume we have at the desk is like, what are our goals? And how are we going to get to those goals based on our thoughts?
And, and I, I also, I just think, um, trying to think about, I want to say this. Um, I think we've spent, in this form, a lot of time talking about, it is that, um, we are really meeting needs of every single kid. Our whole NTSSS process is around making sure that every single student has a specific thing. Uh, so I think we probably talk about a separate component. Um, we talk a lot about student needs, um, because they're there and they exist. But I, I really, um, I, I think, and I know this is a period that has a special, it's a period of, you know, you're short. You know, that we mind focusing on our students. I, I think that that has been the, the goal of this team. And, um, you know, constant conversation to go, making sure that we have students, the whole enrichment. We don't have it, we're multiple students, we have our communities, um, to expand and, and we need to be better. Maybe it's just more geared communication is that you, you talk a lot more, but here, you know, you tend to do them. So maybe that's part of the, the disconnect, I mean.
It could be, I mean, we are universal for universal.
I mean, sometimes we have, like, during our, our student logs, students will go, I'm having a problem with their, their part. They join a bigger group, part, you know, part teacher, um, they could be, you know, reading a, a, kind of a book. And like I've been reading about, well, tops, it's been, so.
Let's, let's, let's hope that students are, you know, we have much, we're coming in much, you know.
And I would apologize if I should, well, very much, we do not.
I, so, so, you know, the fact that we're focused on everybody at the same time, we don't have some, like, so like, I, I respect you, I respect this, I just think, you know.
And that's fine, that's, that's quite a bit, it's the next question.
When I, I look through the, uh, this, this student's, I'm not sure why this is a student's, um, the, the second goal is historical, best actions, decrease, we all know, yeah, that's a good word, you know, we all know that's, you know, etc. The next goal is we push student achievement, student service, such as special education, so, so why? Want to, while that, my goal went on, and we're student achieving, we're also, there is a problem, right? That's always, really, really important, right?
So the way that I wrote that statement is that we have to improve all of MS scores. That's what, that's where I, maybe, maybe that's a great thought, um, we need to look at all of this. Is this, as an area of growth, of growth for all students? In addition, this doesn't really exist in charge as well.
Um, so I think, I, I, no, I'll, I'll, I'll kind of, there's a, so, you know, shortly, but, um, I, it's not, like, I, I feel like we're starting to fall out of our, and I feel like we're starting to, to lose our respect for that. There's an entire day of school, just, you know, we need to make sure everyone is getting, you know, the value of the education that this is. We're, we're just not, we don't seem to be going, we seem to know how to win. And now, I'm just, just not to suggest that, that suburbs don't, uh, put paying attention. It, the opportunity loss shouldn't be that we're starting to lose, lose sight of the, the larger business. How, how, how we're, right?
Anything else on this? Thank you. Do you want to add, um, other things? Um, I think I have to add, I can add something for you. I, I know people that are having a hard time hearing it. So maybe you need to make a home run to it.
Feel like I yelled all the time, so, hey, everybody, if you can hear me, okay?
Yeah, 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 it's all super nudes that are facing you and talk as they talk, that will be making it. We can hear you, Jen, fine, just projecting voices this way, but all students, they're drinking coffee, you, you're only hearing me, please. Thank you.
Thank you. If I'm projecting the phone some, I'm yelling, I just want to make sure that, um, I can be heard. So, um, thank you, um, first, uh, school community members, do you each have this supplemental HMH magnets? Uh, so, uh, one to provide update from, uh, our, our last meeting. We had reviewed the UAM materials in the process. And I think, you know, the consensus was that the work was exceptional, quality of the teacher buying, the teacher engagement was phenomenal. But also understanding, you can also have numerous competing priorities with pretty significant financial assets. So when we reviewed the proposal, the request was to move back to the vendor, go through a second round of negotiations, and then to plot out what those numbers meant. So I just, it's okay, I can buy, I have to invite a public update. So, um, I did ask HMH for real levels of credit. Uh, the first level, which is the optimal level in terms of durability, in terms of cost and the hyperactivity, seems to be five-year plan. So when they're five-year, and, uh, the aggregate cost for that is $200,000, $273,000, and 69 cents. I don't think the request was made to ask for a five-year payment plan. Um, unfortunately, I wasn't able to successfully navigate that process. But the aggregate cost without including the process was $31,000-ish from the March time period. And then a part of it, $150,000 discounted in the aggregate from the initial proposal of credit. So the optimal five-year plan is presented with the year one payment of approximately $68,000. The year two payment of approximately $66,000. And a year three payment of approximately $66,000 as well. Uh, the pricing structure would be a 34% in year one, 33% in year two, 33% in year three. Would the committee prefer our three-year one-year course, or are there specific questions about the five-year option? I, I think we're the same, I think we've all seen, we've said it's the same, also, we've seen the numbers, uh, maybe just very quickly, like, so we. Sure. Sure. So the, okay, I'm talking about, just, just the three and the, just the numbers back and the longer. Sounds good. Three-year auction, $175,000, $175,000, $500,000, $0.50. Year one, $60,000. Year two, $57,000. Year three, $57,000. Year three, $57,000. One-year auction, uh, uh, payment plan, year one, $94,000. Following years approximately $37,614. Year two, year two is beyond the figure, you know, $37,614. Year, roughly a 1-3% increase, uh, for printing the payment loss. But we'll have the, uh, so, yeah.
I all, make sure.
Okay, so, um, so I, I talked to Brian about this, and I'm, I'm not one of them, I'm actually, we also haven't seen the numbers here. Uh, my, my quick thoughts on this, the year one auction, we have these, so, so I might, whatever, consider that. Uh, in, in discussing this with, with Brian, so we're, we're not going to pay $30,000 for our, the credit we have now. Yes, so the additional materials, that would be a cost of what we still, right, right? So I think it's important to kind of take that number out of this, as we're working on these. So the, the five-year really is 38, 36, 36. The three is really 30, 27, 5, 27, 5. So, um, I'm, I'm kind of like, that's on this, because the, the budgets right now, or at the same time, I think, you know, we'd also talk about the fact that we don't know that this is a needed, uh, immediately, we're going to, if it wasn't, if we, if we know this was just a net, net wash, we wouldn't be having this conversation, if we do it. But we do feel like there's, um, there's some, some benefits in this. So as I look at this, you know, I think, well, I just stand one, I need to kind of break it down into a year by year, because that's quite frankly how it works. So if you're looking at it and you say, okay, year one, 38 versus 30, um, you know, in the five to the three. In the five-year, the numbers are pretty close, you take the 30, the 30,000, I think the assumption that we'd be paying the 30,000 in the fourth anyways. So if you take those numbers out, you know, in the five-year, we essentially have the three years, we have the two years, you know, we discussed until three. So I'm, I'm not sure why we're looking at the three-year auction, you're quite honestly, because again, the numbers, the numbers have a yearly basis. Don't want to do the new, by honestly. Uh, so, so if it comes down to a question of, do we have, do we fit in the 38,000? 38,000 this year, and then the 36, 36 the following two years. So that, to me, that's kind of the question. Uh, and I think it's probably important to, to discuss, you mentioned, um, seeing some, seeing some limitations and the rationale behind changing the curriculum and, when it, you know, when it translates over time with the curriculum. I think it's about important, I just really, really appreciate the work that I saw, these guys understood, I too. So we have talked to Lucy Hawkins, which are weeks of study, which are generated clearly, you are. They're excellent, they generate ideas and conversation, but they're not infinitely specific, as you think. They have, uh, all the literacy skills, our vision skills, which is why we use foundation to prepare. Over time, a lot of results, something will be, and it's the experience becomes a little bit asymptomatic and systematized. All the schools, it still exists, although this allows us to allow us to do a very intensive professional development period. Having, and from the whole, we'll be able to get the materials early, we'll be able to align all our teachers together, stolen C-plans, and building, hit the ground running, so when you're ready for, for the long run, it is universal experience, get by, to come by, right? I'll show, I'll tell them. So I think, I've gone back to all this, for times. I think our big thing here, that I really agree, the year one, the three auction, really don't make sense financially, uh. You know, obviously curriculum is expensive. I think Brian's, um, built a good job. Well, and, and, you know, this time from about $370,000-ish, down to, down to $200K. I mean, I think everyone knows, Lucy is not what we need. We're struggling, Jen has a great eyes area for growth, you know, with our MS testing, our daily interaction with students. The foundational meeting at the elementary school level is, I think, I think that's it. Uh, I think there's a huge aspect here, but like, you are going to get a return from the person. You know, and, and I think that's going to be through student success. Uh, we all, it doesn't take a lot of science to figure out that reading is the number one foundation to, to learning. Uh, you know, whether that be math, social studies, moving forward, if you can't read, you're going to struggle. We're looking about patent interest, uh, about another budget being, I think, forever probably looking at a significant amount of guts. Regardless if we get an override or not, that I think we need to really move this in a direction to give our classroom teachers the ability, you know, to actually tackle a problem at hand and get these kids where they need to be. We've been failing them at the elementary school level, we did. We have a new program, we have a, you know, new, newest, you know, uh, assistant superintendent, you know, I know, you know, she has done an outstanding job, getting, you know, getting this in, you know, going through the, the strategies, how this is actually going to work. We've seen it with the math curriculum, with the data kind of coming in already, felt it was new, it's looking good. Uh, I, I think we're at that point now, where our kids need it more than ever. And quite frankly, this is going to kind of spend for Jen and Christine, but the five doesn't make that determination. And Jen and Christine are going to have to figure out where we're going to find that one into, uh, you know, and then practical from there. To me, I think that, we need to do something, and, and, you know, like Texas is the shepherd, you know, we can't just keep hiding behind the happening. That's, that's a great thing. Sometimes Jen's an actual valid excuse. We're talking about foundational learning, what we're doing. We need to be better. We need to figure this out. We need to make sure our kids are getting the resources they need at those early elementary levels, so we can see the success as they go on through to middle school and this. Just wanted to really quickly, Brian touched on something, but he didn't highlight it, um, and this is, this is probably a secondary, um, a secondary importance, but it's mentioned previously in the annual plan as well, so I think it's important. Uh, right now, again, Brian had this conversation, the reality is we're honest for now for a while, and.
Uh, right now, again, Brian had this conversation, the the reality is, to be honest, for a while, and as a human nature, like you said, over time, the teacher starts to vary how we teach it. And so the the fundamental movie of the curriculum is science and factor. And this is kind of why we have the, oh, you know, the rigor is hard to view, which is there. And then Jen, you said, it's great, it's great, I would actually make the observation, it can class the class as well, actually, so. So this is a way to kind of, even by way of backing, going from some of work, okay, pressing, um, in lockstep. And this would kind of focus into what I just talked about earlier, so, so that's nice.
So just as we're talking about how, you know, absolutely, I think this is needed, but how do we pay for this? Do you guys have any thoughts on how that's going to go?
Uh, yes, we're hoping to have some end of year school choice funds that will be able to pay for first year. Um, that have, will be able to, um, drive it to pay by the second year. Yes, with the money that's already funded it, for for going here.
And I think through that, we don't probably have, you know, fiscal issues, probably fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven. That then, once we get by year gap, that's going to be the struggle. Once we're in year two, yeah, we're still going to struggle, all we know is a market question. We can plan for it, we can make sure that, hey, you know, hey, it might be another, you know, stack position that we got cut. However, it's giving hard to, well, are we not to choose to have success? And again, we win regardless of what happens, you know, tonight or in the future, we win. We're really handcuffing our administrators to be able to roll this out. We're certainly giving our teachers, you know, we're kind of really sticking them behind the ball, because, you know, you can't be involved with cricket that no one knows from September, that's going to be pushed back probably six months, if not longer. The PD around it is not going to, so, but by not making the decision to keep pushing the sign, the table and whatever, we're really going to set ourselves back again, that's another year of failure when it comes to the reading foundations.
Um, so Sherry also asked about years two and three, um, so what we would do is, um, start with any retirements or resignations that come at the end of those years. And that we would bottom down, let me aside, with our, the calendar of the base, uh, that's things first. So that's really a lot from, um, people who were designing to prevent this. So, but I, yet again, I agree with what you're saying, but since so many think that we're fiscally irresponsible uh, for the last few years, I just think that it's fiscally responsible to ask the question, how we can pay for it. So I don't want anyone to think that I'm against this, you know, I I think that our students absolutely need this, deserve this, but I just, or in order to, um, I guess up here, that we're fiscally responsible, we probably believe in that fiscally responsible, I just wanted to ask that question and make sure we have a plan going forward.
So, uh, just just to, just about this, this is, it's going to sound like it's semantics, but it's not. So to be very clear about this, the the thirty-eight thousand this year, etc., that is, it's not money we're finding, it's not money that we're creating, it's it's going to be a choice, right? It's going to be A versus B, and that's versus that are the conversation again. So it's thirty-eight thousand, we're not spending on something else, just be aware of that. And and this is not to sound like I'm against this, for it, but I think it's a point very, pretty clear right there. This is not money, when Christine says, oh, we're going to use choice money, well, that's what choice money would use for something else if we, if we, you know, if we did do a year. So I I I believe we're intending to spend school choice now, it's your own issue.
Well, no, it's not.
Okay, sure, smart, and this is not a hit. So, yeah, so, uh, just to be very clear about that, this is not, you know, it's not a whole, we'll we'll look at a table, buy thirty-eight thousand. We're spending that on this, because that was something else.
If I'm not mistaken, we can't go almost tonight, right? So, um, maybe our next meeting, I can add that, okay? All right, do you have any other business? So I think the only thing, um, that I just wanted to mention, and all the information has been going out, but it takes the year to the twenty of the annual uh, basketball meeting with our teachers versus police and some high school students, uh, in there as well. Um, will take place Friday, day three, seven P M at the high school. Um, so if, uh, people, you know, can buy tickets, it's been, it's slow going this year, um, the need is absolutely there. Um, we have definitely lost some people in our community and families could definitely feel the support, and that is what I T E C does for our families in Oregon. So that's it, so we can leave this meeting, yeah. But anybody have anything else? All right, do you have a, um, intention of a meeting, zero second? Uh, the other, uh, whole time.